We will call the meeting to order. This is Nina Eddie Mitchell.
Chairperson and today's date is?
Today's date is the twenty second of January two thousand twenty four. It is seven thirty seven.
Five thirty seven.
I mean, five thirty seven. We get seventeen thirty seven.
Five thirty seven P M. And I will call roll for tonight. Commissioner Bronze.
Here.
Commissioner Cobbins is absent. Commissioner Eddie Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Harrow.
Here.
And I also report on the posting of the agenda. The agenda for tonight's meeting was posted on Friday, January nineteenth, two thousand twenty four at five fourteen P M.
Public comment by members of the public on items not on the agenda, but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Personnel Commission. Please limit your comments to three minutes. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons desiring to address the Commission on matters not on the agenda. The law does not permit commission action or extended discussion with any item not on the agenda, except under special circumstances. If commission action is requested, the commission may place the matter on a future agenda. Doesn't look like we have anyone in front of that.
There's no members of the public present, no public comment for tonight. Okay, and the next item on our agenda is some scheduled training. So tonight we have up on the Zoom screen is Alex Boulder Bold. Bulberdine. I'm tripping over your name, Alex. He is from the law firm of Lieber Cassidy Whitmore, and he is going to be giving us a presentation tonight on some of the best practices and considerations for updating the agency's human resources rules and regulations. So at each of your seats, you have a copy of the PowerPoint presentation in slide note-taking formats. It looks like this. And this will allow you to take notes throughout the presentation. This is something you'll want to hold on to as we move forward later this year and begin our project to update the human resources rules and regulations. But we're kicking it off with this training by Alex so that all of us have a similar understanding and mindset as we're going into taking on this project. So Alex, I'll hand it over to you. Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Leanne, and thank you to the Commission for inviting me to participate in this process and provide this introductory training prior to the commencement of considered rule changes to the city's human resources rules and regulations. As Leanne provided in her introduction, I'm an attorney, a labor relations attorney at the law firm of Lieber Cassidy Whitmore. I'm based in Los Angeles and a San Francisco native. So have affinity for Bay Area, Bay Area adjacent jurisdictions. So happy to be here this evening and happy to provide this kind of primer on potential changes to the city's human resources rules and regulations. So we'll get started. The purpose of this training is, of course, to provide some introduction to these rule changes that we may be making. Happy for this to be a kind of an interactive process. I did reserve some time at the end, as you'll see in the agenda that's now on the screen, for questions and answers, but I'm happy to during the course of this brief presentation, answer any questions that you may have that are germane to the subjects that I will be discussing. So as you can see, the agenda for the training kind of broken down into about, you know, five kind of substantive sections, brief discussion about the purpose of the training, overview of the current H R rules and regulations, the type of proposals that were likely to consider changing or the proposals to change rules and regulations during the course of this process, description of what the process looks like itself. And we've been working with Leanne to kind of develop that process. Really, Leanne is driving this process. So we are kind of passengers in this process, but involved as well. And then I'm going to discuss some of the history of the applicable law that has obligations in terms of what matters the city will negotiate with labor organizations that may be affected or whose members may be affected by some of these rule changes. And then questions and answers at the end. So with that, we'll get right into it. So the purpose of this training are kind of several folds to kind of provide an overview of what the rules and regulations currently provide, not going to get into into those rules and regulations in great depth here, but kind of to situate ourselves with the rules and regulations that the city may be electing to change or proposing to change. I'll start there. Also, again, to discuss the process that the city will implement in order to consider potential rule changes there. Some of the legal obligations that will dictate to us how we engage in negotiations with the affected labor organizations about those rule changes. And then really, the purpose of this training is, you know, of course, to comply with the law and our legal obligations. Really, one of the related purposes there is to maintain the good labor relations that I understand the city has with its represented workforce and the employee organizations that represent those employees. So we're going to be doing this by the book so as to maintain those good labor relations that the city has with its represented workforce. In terms of the H R rules and regulations that are now in place, the city's H R rules and regulations, about seventy pages long, divided into nine sections that you see kind of enumerated here on the screen. Really, you know, eight substantive sections, although there are substantive subsections to the introduction. But you'll see here issues that are very important to represented workforce. What does the classification plan look like? What are the compensation payroll practices? How does the city go about recruitment and selecting employees, appointing employees to certain offices? How the city goes about separating and disciplining employees? What is the process and protocol for employees and employee organizations to potentially appeal discipline that the city has provided notice of to the employees? What are the specific leave provisions that apply to employees? What are the benefits that employees receive as city employees? So very, very key terms to the employment relationship, the employer-employee relationship. And we'll discuss kind of how that the kind of integral nature of some of these subjects affects our bargaining obligations and entitlements that the employee organizations have with respect to potential or proposed changes to some of these terms here. So in terms of the types of proposals we're discussing here, we're not likely going to be undertaking a wholesale revision of these personnel policies, these H R rules and regulations. Really, the intent is several fold to bring the current H R rules and regulations, which were last amended in two thousand seven, up to date with the current state of the law. So the first type of proposals and the type of proposals that me and my colleague Nate, who's joining us as an attendee at this presentation, will primarily be focusing on our proposals in order to bring the H R rules and regulations into conformity and into compliance with the current state of the law. As you may know, labor and employment laws, particularly in the state of California, are some of the most heavily legislative, legislated areas of the law. So we do see a number of changes every single year in terms of the legal obligations that apply to employees and particularly public employees. So one of our objectives is going to be to review the H R rules and regulations in order to ensure that the rules comply with the current state of the law. I should mention here that while the the statement as to the legal obligations under the H R rules may not necessarily reflect current law, it is my understanding that the city is currently compliant with all its obligations under the law. So the city practices may may reflect something different that is currently reduced to writing in the H R rules and regulations. So one of our tasks is going to be to suggest proposals to align current practice that, again, complies with the law with what is reduced to writing in the H R rules and regulations. One of the other types of proposals that we're likely to consider and the city will likely make as part of this review and updating process are proposals to kind of improve city operations. So Leanne and the H R team will be undertaking a review of the H R rules and regulations. I know that Leanne has been, over the course of the last, you know, sixteen-plus years, taking dutifully and diligently taking notes on areas of the H R rules and regulations that could potentially be improved through and by her experience implementing the H R rules and regulations. And I know that in addition to Leanne's review, Leanne will be requesting that other city managers also provide their input on ways that the H R rules and regulations could be improved to either align with current city operations or both could be potentially improved to align with best practices in the industry as they relate to these subjects. That is really the third area of proposals we're likely to see where the proposals are not necessarily to align with current city operations, but are maybe proposed to align with best H R practices. So we will be applying our expertise in our review and our work with other public employers throughout the state to review what we are familiar with works best in different areas. And some of these type of proposals may be to actually take sections out from the H R rules and regulations where they're they may be better addressed as a kind of a standalone policy that can be updated more regularly if that area of the law is a little bit more dynamic and requires regular review and updating. The fourth kind of category of proposals are those where the the current language is either vague or ambiguous. As a labor relations practitioner, I understand through my experience that where the language is not clear, there's likely to be confusion. And where there's likely to be confusion, there's likely to be conflict. So one of our principal tasks, whenever I get the opportunity to review anything, whether it's a an M O U or a policy of a client of mine or a document like these H R rules and regulations, I always look to ensure that the language is clear and unambiguous so that both parties have a an understanding and agreement as to what specific terms and phrases mean so that there's no confusion and no conflict down the line. So that's one of the principal types of proposals as well that we'll be looking to ensure in this process. In our review, in kind of reducing kind of these categories of proposals even further, some of these proposals are likely to be substantive in nature, you know, where we're actually changing how the city operates, whether in order to comply with the law or because we elect to make a proposed change that is not necessarily required by the law, but a substantive change versus, say, a non-substantive change where we're just changing the language, clarifying the language, you know, improving the readability of the document that may be non-substantive. The reason we bring up these types of distinctions is that they're likely different obligations from a legal perspective that attach to each. So where there is a non-substantive proposal, there's likely limited obligation to bargain over that change. However, I will provide a fairly significant caveat that what one party believes is non-substantive, another party may believe is substantive. So where there's a disagreement in terms of whether it's a material change or a non-material change would suggest erring on the side of bargaining over that change so as to comply with our legal obligations to bargain where there is a substantive change that will affect a term and condition of employment, which I'll discuss here in a moment. So in terms of kind of the bargaining obligations, I've already discussed kind of the where there are no bargaining obligations. I suspect that's going to be in the kind of minority of cases that we discuss as part of the review here. Most of the decisions, given the the nature of the subjects we're discussing here, as you saw on that slide, that discussed what is provided for in these H R rules and regulations. Most of the subjects here relate to the terms and conditions of employment for city employees. Where there is a subject that relates to the terms and conditions of employment and there is a proposal to make a change to those terms and conditions of employment, there is a bargaining obligation under the Myers-Millias-Brown Act, which is the statutory scheme under which we're operating here. That requires, that imposes an affirmative legal obligation for the city to both provide notice to the affected employee organizations and then after providing notice of the proposed change to actually engage in a negotiation or a meet and confer with the employee organization over those changes. We're optimistic, and I think we'll discuss in the next section kind of in terms of the process that Leanne has put together that has a lot of engagement with the employee organizations. We're optimistic that both parties will are participating in this exercise in good faith with an objective to reach an agreement. As I mentioned, we're not making changes for the sake of making changes. Most of these changes are, again, either to to comply with the law or to improve city operations and move the city towards best practices on these subjects. So optimistic that through and by our engagement with the employee organizations that represent employees will come to an agreement. But it is likely that most of the proposals that we'll be discussing over the course of this year, prior to kind of revising and updating these H R rules and regulations, will actually require what is known as decisional bargaining, where the city, because of the the nature of the change and the import of the change to the terms and conditions of employees' employment with the city, does actually require that we negotiate the change itself as opposed to what we see here in that second sub-bullet point there, effects or impacts bargaining. I will just mention that where there's a change to comply with a stricter legal obligation. So I'm using this as a hypothetical, and I don't believe it's it's put forth in the H R rules. There was a change regarding legal obligations to provide employees more paid sick leave that just took effect this year. We have an obligation, we as the city have a legal obligation to provide employees that additional entitlement to paid sick leave. So there's no bargaining about the decision to do so. We have an obligation to do do that and will do that. And I understand the city is doing that with respect to paid sick leave. However, there may be kind of subsidiary issues that require negotiation by the city related to the effects or impacts of such a decision. So even where the decision is made, either to conform with legal obligations or because the city has a management right to make a decision, and there still are potential obligations related to bargaining those types of decisions. So I'll unpack some of this in a subsequent section, but this is kind of a primer for that future discussion. But it is my assessment, just based on a very cursory review of the H R rules and regulations and the subjects covered in the H R rules and regulations, that most of the bargaining that we're going to be doing is decisional bargaining other than those changes to comply with stricter legal obligations. And in that case, we're going to be involved in some effects or impacts bargaining. And really, where no bargaining obligations attach is only where there are minor stylistic changes that have no effect on terms and conditions of employment, which I think, again, is going to be the minority of proposals that we're discussing here. In any event, spent a fair amount of time on this slide, so moving along. In terms of the kind of the process and timeline for developing and adopting proposals, I look to Leanne and credit Leanne with describing or putting together this kind of this, the process here. So I will describe the process, but this is really Leanne's making. And I think it's a great and thoughtful process that she's put together here. So concurrent to our legal review, which you see discussed at the top of this slide, where, again, we'll review the the rules and regulations in order to ensure conformity with current legal obligations. In human resources, in other words, Leanne and the certain department heads and select managers will also be concurrently reviewing the H R rules and regulations for changes that they believe should be made in order to, again, improve city operations. We will both, we on the legal side and Leanne on the H R city side, will also be reviewing the H R rules and regulations to consider additional changes to align with best practices in this, on these subjects. So we'll undertake that review over the next, you know, month and a half or so, keeping the timelines a little bit loose on each of these stages. It is the the overall objective of the city and city staff to have these, to have the H R rules and regulations updated, finalized, adopted by city council by the end of this calendar year. So that's really the timeline under which we're operating. So there may be some movement on each of these steps in terms of when we get them done. But the overall objective will be for the city to have in place at the end of calendar year, two thousand twenty four, new H R rules and regulations that accomplish each of the goals in terms of the proposals that I discussed on a prior slide. After the city staff and outside council provide their input on proposals that the city should make, there will be a series of meetings between city staff led by Leanne and each of the city's recognized employee organizations. Those employee organizations are identified on this slide. It is likely that these meetings will be happening over the the majority of this year just because the the H R rules and regulations is a lengthy document and because most, if not all, of the subjects that we're going to be discussing in terms of proposed changes do require decisional bargaining with each of these groups. So it is my understanding that city staff will be meeting with each of the employee organizations to discuss each of the sections of the H R rules and regulations. And then we'll also be reporting back to the Personnel Commission on changes that you might like to see in each of those sections and then kind of truing up based on your input as the Personnel Commission with jurisdiction over this subject as well as the changes that the employee organizations have either accepted from the city or proposed themselves for the city's considerations. We're going to kind of need to put kind of everything back together again. This is a complicated exercise. Anytime you endeavor to engage multiple parties in negotiations with the objective of reaching one final agreement, but that is our objective. That is the task and it is our undertaking. And we will get there working cooperatively, collaboratively together. It may be that over the course of the year and in subsequent Personnel Commission meetings, Leanne is providing you an update on the status of negotiations on each, you know, working through the H R rules and regulations. So it may be that Leanne is bringing you, you know, the firefighters, you know, the what each party has agreed to or proposed in terms of changes, you know, say, sections one through three of the H R rules and regulations, you know, in several months. And then the next kind of tranche of sections for your consideration input review thereafter, again, with the objective of reaching a full and final agreement with each of the employee organizations and with your review and approval, you know, in this, in the fall, prior to city council final approval later this year. So that's kind of how things will look in terms of the timing. Things may not move in perfect synchronicity. So we may hear from certain groups prior to others, but I know that Leanne will be dutiful and diligent in her work with each of the employee organizations and be regularly reporting back to you in terms of the progress in those negotiations and also requesting your input in terms of changes that you might like to see proposed to the to the bargaining units.
Alex, can I comment real quick on that?
Of course, of course.
So there may be sections of the rules that we review and then we review again, and then we may review it yet again. So it depends on how things go forward with the with the labor groups because there may be something that gets raised by one labor group that a different labor group didn't raise. So then I have to circle back perhaps and go back to the other labor groups and say, well, what if, would you be okay if it was worded this way? So it's possible that there may be some sections that you've seen more than one time in this process. But what I'm going to try to do is keep the four labor groups kind of moving in sort of sync as best as possible between your Personnel Commission meetings. So that's going to be, you know, it's more the art of this than anything is trying to get those meetings scheduled and make progress so that at each Personnel Commission meeting, once this project gets kind of underway, that there's sections that I'm ready to bring to you that all four labor groups have looked at, provided their input. And then that's coupled with the input that we got from management, from the legal counsel, from my office. And then you're sort of seeing a little bit of the final end product of what the changes are that are proposing forward. Then if there's something that you feel that we missed or that we should see differently, then I need to grab that and note that. And then that may cause me to have to go back to the labor groups again, have them take one more look at it, and then it will come back to you again. So there there may be a little bit of that back and forth as we go through this process. And I do recall that from the last time we did this update. And that's normal. That's kind of a normal process that we're going to go through. So but I'm hoping that we can just sort of incrementally keep it moving with the target of taking this to council by the end of November of twenty four, at the latest. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you, Leanne. No, Leanne is is undertaking quite a task here, all this multi-party negotiations. It's going to require some shuttle diplomacy. She can get it done, I know she can. And we'll be hearing from her regularly throughout the year on on the status of those negotiations.
But because we're not in any regular bargaining, we're in close contracts with all of our labor groups right now. So this is the time to do this.
Yes, that's exactly right. This would be, this is a significant undertaking in the best of times. And this is about as the best of times we can hope for with no parties negotiating their M O U's this this year. So this is the right time to strike while the iron is hot. So again, just in terms of overview and kind of history of applicable law, this is really just to situate you again, more specifically in in terms of our legal obligations here. I don't need to bore you with it. I've cut this section down significantly, but do want to kind of walk you through the bargaining obligations that apply. I mentioned previously that we're operating under the Myers-Millias-Brown Act. This is the statutory scheme. Uh, this is the statutory scheme uh that applies to public employers and public employees in the state of California. Uh, it requires, uh, it allows for collective bargaining and also imposes certain obligations uh in terms of what must be bargained and what uh what constitutes kind of good faith bargaining. So we'll discuss that uh in the next couple of slides. Um, so as to uh, so the Public Employment Relations Board is the uh kind of administrative agency, the quasi judicial agency that oversees collective bargaining, uh that can enforce uh unfair labor practice charges when a an entity, a a public employer or a a public employee organization does not engage in bargaining in good faith. So Purb administers uh the Myers Millius Brown Act uh and ensures uh that it's uh implemented uh correctly. Um, so the this again is the the statutory scheme under which we're operating in terms of our negotiations uh related to changes uh to these H R rules and regulations as well as the kind of the uh enforcement agency that will uh ensure that we do uh uh do so properly. In terms of the kind of the specific statutory obligations, um, this is a kind of a in the initial statutory section, the purpose of the M M B A is kind of twofold to promote communication uh between uh employers and employees, public employers and public employees, and to provide a a kind of a a method for resolving disputes. So here we are engaging uh in an exercise that is intended to promote that full communication. We will be meeting as uh the process uh just described, uh, meeting regularly uh and in good faith with the public employee organizations uh to uh hear thoughts that they may have about changes uh that the city is proposing, and also an opportunity for the city to consider uh proposals uh that those public employee organizations may have themselves. Again, the purpose here is to reach an agreement uh on uh terms that are uh clear and unambiguous so that there's not confusion down the road for uh the city, uh, the public employee uh employees who work for the city or the uh employee organizations that represent them uh to avoid any potential conflict down the road. In terms of the rights of the employee organization that we're here to honor and respect, they have the right to represent their members, the public employees in the employment relations with public agencies. So that's why we are engaging uh them. Uh, we, we, they have a right and a responsibility to represent uh city employees who are represented by those organizations. And that is uh something that we take seriously and are honoring and respecting in this process. In terms of what our specific obligations are, uh, in terms of negotiating changes uh to um kind of matters within the scope of representation. Uh, this one section uh provides a general rule and then a kind of a qualified limited exception to that rule. So as a general rule, all matters relating to employment conditions, uh, including the terms and conditions of employment are within the scope of representation. We have a legal obligation uh to negotiate changes uh with employee organizations uh if we're going to propose a change to that uh to those uh uh terms and conditions. There is a a a limited exception to that general rule uh that says where uh the matter relates to the merits necessity of organization of any service. Uh, there's not an obligation. Those issues don't fall within the scope of representation. So if the city decided to say, we're going to cease uh operating a wreck and park department or division, and not that I'm saying you would, uh, but that's a fundamental kind of managerial decision that the city would have to make. Um, we wouldn't have to negotiate necessarily that decision with the employees who work in wreck and park. But we would potentially have to, going back to uh a number of slides ago, uh, negotiate the effects or impacts of that decision because it again, it affects matters within the scope of representation, even though the decision itself is a fundamental managerial one. So again, this, this also kind of ties into changes in order to comply with the law. We have an obligation to comply with the law. Uh, so that matter is not within the scope of representation, uh, but it it would trigger uh effects or impacts bargaining. And again, we are going to account for that in the process that Leanne has thoughtfully uh developed for us to uh implement in this uh in this process.
One of the things that comes up in this area that is in the H R rules and regs is the layoff policy. So the H R rules and regs contains a citywide layoff policy because employees could move from one bargaining unit to a different bargaining unit during the course of their employment. And then there's layoff procedures, which includes bumping back to previous held positions, which might be in a different bargaining unit. So that is why you do not want to have a layoff policy within the M O U, but rather a citywide policy within the rules and regulations. And then the decision to have a certain number of employees in the organization is a budget decision that's determined by the city council as part of our our budget process. Um, but the effects of layoff is something that we have an obligation to bargain with our labor groups if we were to head down that path. Unfortunately, goers had to experience that a couple of times, and so that's certainly have some familiarity with that process. Hope we never have to ever do it again, uh, but it's important that we have solid rules in place when that situation occurs because that is a very stressful and difficult time in an organization. And you do not want to have anything that's ambiguous or not easily understood because if confusion arises about which employee is laid off or which employee is not laid off, it's not a place you want to be. So that is always a section that we want to take a good look at, and it's one of those sections that um comes up for effects bargaining.
That that's exactly correct. There's a a strong interest in having a citywide policy in terms of the kind of the administration of layoffs so that employees across bargaining units understand and are held to the same uh or substantially similar terms uh in the event of a layoff, which might be necessary. Uh, you know, in the circumstances, as Leanne has mentioned, the city's encountered previously. Uh, you know, this is when we're not considering those decisions uh is exactly the 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 time to uh consider whether uh the procedures are are clear uh and consistent um and to make adjustments uh accordingly if they're not. Um, so just continuing with our slow march through the Myers Millius Brown Act. In terms of uh obligations to provide uh to engage in uh negotiations, uh, the there's the obligation is not only limited to the uh engagement in good faith negotiations, uh, but prior to uh proposing any changes, you need to provide written notice uh to the employee organizations. Uh, so that's also provided for here. Again, uh, you have obligation to meet and confer on any matters uh within the scope of representation as we saw it defined on that prior slide. Uh, there is an exception here. It's a very limited one. Uh, this is uh in cases of emergency. So this was uh directly uh implicated during COVID uh where, you know, employers had to undertake uh significant changes to their operations in order to ensure uh the health and safety of our workplaces. Uh, we didn't have time to negotiate necessarily all of those changes uh with employee organizations prior to implementing them. But nevertheless, um, e- except in cases of emergency, you do have the obligation uh to provide notice and to then negotiate uh those changes uh if the change is in uh within the scope of representation. And this again expressly applies to, you know, changes that may be uh effectuated by the actions uh or conduct of a a board or commission. So uh directly applicable to the work we're undertaking here as a Personnel Commission. So there's a number of uh cases that have kind of clarified um some of these statutory obligations. Uh, there are curb decisional uh uh cases. Um, there are also California Supreme Court cases, which uh, you know, if there's a curb decision, those matters can be uh appealed to a court of appeal uh and then on to the Supreme Court. So the uh there have been over the course of the last, uh, you know, twenty plus years, a number of decisions uh that have clarified our obligations, uh, mostly in terms of this uh area between what is a management right uh for which there is only the obligation to engage in effects or impacts bargaining uh versus uh what is the kind of a fundamental uh uh subjective uh um subject of representation uh within the scope of representation uh for which uh decisional bargaining is required. Uh, so the Claremont case is a Supreme Court case that's referenced at the bottom of this slide. It pro- prescribes a three-step balancing test uh in order to in order to determine whether a management uh whether management must meet and confer with a recognized employee organization uh when the implementation of a fundamental manag- managerial or policy decision significantly and adversely affects a bargaining unit's uh working conditions. Um, so that's really the the case we're operating under here. Uh, again, this test, uh, this kind of three-part test is articulated here. Um, again, given the uh the subjects that we're discussing here, uh, most of these matters uh are mandatory subjects of bargaining uh for which there's not a a kind of a fundamental managerial uh or policy decision at issue. Uh, these are uh matters that are likely going to fall again squarely in the uh that category of uh subjects that require uh negotiation on the decision itself as opposed to the effects or impacts of the decision. Um, most, we're not considering um, you know, discontinuing uh the performance of certain services uh provided by the city here uh in this uh review and updating of our uh H R rules and regulations. We're considering revisions to those rules and regulations, which again clearly relate uh to the terms and conditions of employment. So really, uh, we're we're talking about decisional uh bargaining and our obligations to engage uh in that uh exercise. This is kind of further description of uh kind of the categories of managerial decisions uh and the scope of uh uh representation that it is implicated by them. Uh, really, again, here, we're talking about this this second category, pardon me. Uh, what's described at kind of sub bullet point two, uh, diff- decisions defining the employment relationship, uh, workplace rules, regulations, uh, order of succession of layoffs and recalls like Leanne was uh mentioning a moment ago, which are always mandatory subjects of bargaining. Um, so these slides uh concerning our our legal obligations is really to put uh this this matter squarely uh in the uh kind of decisional bargaining category. Uh, again, we'll we'll engage in good faith negotiations regardless of what type of negotiations are required. Uh, but the majority of these decisions uh or proposed uh changes to the H R rules and regulations will require actual decisional bargaining um as opposed to uh no bargaining or uh effects or impacts bargaining, other than, you know, the changes to comply with the law or the kind of minor stylistic changes in order to uh make the H R rules and regulations clear without really changing uh the uh effect or impact of the of the current operative rule. So I have a couple kind of hypotheticals here uh to kind of, kind of clarify, elucidate some of the points that I've made here. Um, w- w- one area of the law that's changed uh a couple of times in a couple of different areas uh in the last several years uh relates to uh background uh checks, uh criminal background checks, uh inquiries into uh uh applicants, I, you know, off-duty drug use. Um, so there have been a couple of changes here, uh, in- including under the Fair Chance Act and most recently this year under uh Assembly Bill twenty-one eighty-eight uh that preclude consideration of uh an applicant's off uh duty cannabis use. Uh, so this is is a likely area we'll want to take a close look in order to ensure uh compliance with the law or at least consistency with the city's practice in these areas uh against um what is reduced to writing in the current and operative H R rules in order to ensure they're synced up, uh, and there's kind of no gap between uh current the city practice, which again conforms to uh legal requirements and uh what is uh provided for in the H R rules and regulations. Uh, again, here, this is the type of decision uh where we need to comply with the law, uh, not going to be negotiating with the employee organizations necessarily on um how we do so, uh, but there may be uh effects or impacts related to uh bringing the H R rules and regulations that uh employee organizations have questions about, concerns about, uh, and uh those uh effects or impacts related to the bargaining, uh, to the uh change in the law or things that the city uh will need to consider and potentially account for in the H R rules and regulations. So this hypothetical is one example uh i- in terms of one type of proposal that we're uh we we're likely to see a couple of times uh in our review of the H R rules and regulations.
And this is also one of those areas where um, some of the rules may apply differently depending on the type of job or classification because when we're hiring employees in the police department, there's certain things we can do differently than when we're hiring an employee who's working here at the city hall. Or when we're hiring an employee who's going to be working in recreation with children, there's different things we can check at different stages of the hiring process than we can with somebody who's going to be a maintenance worker. So, um, you know, these these, we are in compliance with the law. Uh, we just need to make sure that the H R rules and regulations are uh properly reflect that.
And it may be that we just need to change, uh, you know, to provide that kind of latitude for the city to account for the differences in uh employees, uh, different types of employment to reflect uh those changes uh and the the different legal obligations that attach to them. So the, you know, the uh, you know, the the worker in public works who operates heavy machinery and is subject to Department of Transportation uh drug testing guidelines, um, may still be subject. Uh, we, you could still consider, uh, you know, cannabis use um by that individual or applicant for employment in that position, uh, whereas if you you might not be able to do so for the administrative analyst who works in, you know, uh, H R. So uh, we we will take a a close look at at those provisions uh and uh recommend revisions uh in order to uh ensure uh compliance with the law as is reflected in the H R rules and regulations, understanding, of course, that the city's uh practices do comply uh with current legal requirements. So another area, and I mentioned this uh previously in the presentation, not on a slide, um, you know, there there have been a number of changes in terms of uh leave entitlements, leave obligations for employers. Um, so the the city may want to consider and uh revising what constitutes, for instance, sick leave abuse. Uh, if this is uh overly restrictive, I'm not saying it necessarily is. Uh, but leaves uh are one of the areas uh that's highly legislated uh and will want to ensure uh that the city's uh section on leave provisions accounts for all of the leaves uh that California employees are entitled to. There are uh, you know, regularly new uh paid or unpaid protected leaves that are added to the already lengthy list of uh leaves to which California uh public employees uh are entitled. And we'll just want to ensure uh that this section of the H R rules and regulations reflects uh the myriad types of leaves uh that public employees in the state are entitled to, uh, so that it 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 reflects current law. This is, I I think the next hypothetical also uh kind of leads in this direction. But there may also be areas of the H R rules and regulations, and I believe I previewed uh this uh earlier in the presentation, where it may be in the city's interest to remove what's provided for in the uh current H R rules and regulations from the H R rules and regulations and have that uh, you know, reduced to writing in the form of a city policy, some sort of document that allows for more regular updating uh of the requirements uh under such a policy. Of the requirements under such a policy because of the dynamic area of. Of that area of the law. Just something to consider and we'll be bringing likely a proposal or two along those lines to. The Personnel Commission and potentially to the bargaining units for their consideration. It, it might not affect legal obligations we would have if we're just moving. The language wholesale from inside the HR rules and regulations to a, a policy, but. To the extent that there are revisions to it, we would also be engaged in negotiations about what, what that looks like. So this is, this is a likely one of those areas where we may want to consider. Kind of removal of some of what's provided for in the HR rules and regulations to a standalone policy. So we have a procedure that relates to discrimination and harassment. Prevention in the HR rules and regulations. Again, the city is in full legal compliance with its obligations related to preventing. Workplace discrimination and harassment. But again, this is another area that is. The law is very dynamic, whether, you know, the changes are related to new legislation or. Related to developments in case law. This is certainly since two thousand and seven, there have been a number of changes. In this area of the law that will want to ensure conformity and compliance with. And due to the number of changes in this area of the law, the, the city may want to consider removing. Some or all of this to a standalone policy. That can account for changes to this area of law more easily and facilitate compliance. With those regular changes.
And I, and I thought we talked on this, Alex, but this is one area where we have actually already done just that. And the commission tonight has at their places a copy of our current harassment. Discrimination, retaliation, prevention policy, along with the training materials, because we're going through training with all of our employees right now. And so this was last updated, I believe in two. Two thousand and twenty-two, we updated the policy to make sure it was current and compliant. And so we, we sent that out to all of our bargaining groups, all the bargaining groups had time to review it and provide any feedback. And then we've kept it as a separate standalone policy. So then the question would be, do we, do we fold this into the HR rules and regs as a replacement to the language that's there now? Or do we remove that section, reference it somehow and keep it as a standalone policy? So Alex and his team will be looking at that and giving us a legal recommendation back, and then that will be shared back with you and the labor groups.
And I'll just say now that while we're discussing this. Generally a best practice not to have the same policy provided for in two different places. You can understand why there's. Likely to be, unless you're ensuring that they're exactly the same version. There likely to be confusion about which applies. And again, where there's confusion about. The language that applies or which version applies, there's likely to be conflict about that. So, so as to reduce. The likelihood of confusion, the likelihood for future conflict, best have one version in one place. And you can cross-reference it from the HR rules and regulations to the standalone policy. It sounds like that's already kind of the direction we've taken. So we may just want to follow through with the kind of preliminary steps. In that direction and make that, that change a kind of a full and final one. And just reference the outside standalone policy that exists on the subject in the HR rules rather than. Trying to cut and paste and have duplicative policies in two different places.
Yeah, I agree, Alex.
Moving along to the end. So again, we'll undertake, you know, our, our legal obligations. In, in terms of bargaining these changes in good faith. Leanne, again, to her credit, has developed a very thoughtful approach that will. Engage the employee organizations early, keep them engaged throughout. Demonstrate that really we are interested in reaching an agreement with them and will undertake. Our best efforts in good faith throughout that process to explain the rationale for our decisions. Consider proposals that they may have. When they make a proposal, explain if we're not going to accept the proposal, why we aren't. And then in the event that we are, Leanne's gonna do her best to, you know. Reconcile a proposal made by one employee organization with, you know, the other employer organizations. Keep everybody moving forward together, because we're gonna end up together. When we have this final proposal to you later this year for your review before. City Council's review and final approval. But that's, that's the process. The next slide is just that question and answer placeholder. So I am happy to answer any questions that you may have. About this process, but really you do have the subject matter expert there in the room with you. Who can describe all of the work that she's already undertaken to get us where we are, which is in a great place to start this process. We're excited to participate as kind of outside counsel here and. Work with Leanne and the employer organizations to the extent that we need to moving forward, but. Excited about this process and again, happy to answer any questions that you may have of me at this early juncture.
Missioners, do you have any questions at this time that you would like to ask of Alex? Now, it looks like we don't have any questions at this time, Alex. So thank you for your. Review and presentation. I think it was very helpful to get us all in the mindset of. Thinking about this project and what our roles are as we move forward. So with that. I think, I think we're, we're complete with this part of the meeting.
Great. Well, I look forward to again, working with you and I will continue to be available for any questions you may have. You can send those through Leanne to me and we'll work to get those answered. So looking forward to working with you and. I'll stop sharing my screen and exit the meeting now, but thank you again.
Thank you, Alex. Okay, so we're back to the regular part of the agenda. So we're on item number four.
So everybody had a chance to read minutes.
Oh, before we go to the minutes, I just wanted to note for the record that Commissioner Cummins did arrive at the Personnel Commission meeting at five forty four P M. Sorry. You heard most of the presentation, only missed a little bit.
Topic was brutal today.
Yes, I know the weather.
Yes, the rain was not helpful.
Okay, item number four, the minutes.
Everybody read the minutes and they have any corrections or additions?
Anybody want to make a motion?
Yeah, a motion to approve the minute. All motion of the approved minutes of second, our last meeting, November twenty seventh.
I will second that. On favor. And that was a motion by Commissioner Bronze and a second by Commissioner Hall. And it passed on a four oh vote. No formal report for the commission this evening. And recruitment and selection report. Right, so we're on item six, informational item six point one, our recruitment and selection report. Is attached in your packet. Page one and the top of page two is all the recruitments that we have posted where we're accepting applications for. The positions and so those are there, there. I see one typo and I, I don't have the correct answer, but the management analyst position is. That row should have been deleted actually because it's our, that recruitment closed and we're screening the applications, so it's already moved to the other section. Of the report, so that line was deleted. It's about the middle of page one, under detention service officer. That line should have been removed. As it's already been posted and the recruitment's already closed and been dawned to the, to the next phase. And then when you get to page two, the main section on page two is recruitments that are in process where we have candidates at other phases. Of the hiring process or we're conducting interviews, candidates in background check, candidates we've given. You know, a conditional offer and we're finishing final pre-hire steps or we have a written exam or something else is happening with the recruitment. In some cases, we, they may be a continuous recruitment where we're still taking in applications. In other cases, such as the management analyst, the recruitment is closed and we're screening applications and we have interviews coming up. And then on the bottom of page two, going to the top of page three are the new hires that you've completed. Since your last meeting. And then the second section on page three is the employee separations we've had since your last meeting. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I do have a question.
Sure.
For the management assistant and management analyst positions, I see there are three positions available. Are they all within the same department?
No, no. Management assistant, we have one opening in city administration slash city clerk's office. One opening in the community development department and one opening in facilities and fleet. And with the management analyst position, we have two openings in public works. And the last opening is in, is in city administration. Thank you. Actually, I'm sorry, not city administration. It's in utilities department. So all the, all the candidates will be interviewed at the same time for all. Okay, yes. And then we look for best fit based on that we've got. Sometimes candidates say, well, I only want the opening in blank, blank, blank department, but most of the time candidates will, you know. Go, you know, go to the opening that the city is offering, if we think that's the best spot for that particular candidate. And then if we have an eligibility list remaining, should there be another opening in, you know, during the year of the list, then we can go back to this recruitment to fill that opening.
Okay, nice.
Any other questions? It's just to receive the reports on this particular item. And then six point two is our harassment, discrimination, retaliation, prevention training update. So I just wanted to let you know that we are. Two thirds of the way through training all of our employees with the third and final session scheduled for this Wednesday. We're having sessions that are designed for managers and supervisors. And sessions that are designed for employees who are not supervisors. And at your place, I have a copy of the PowerPoint presentation that we're utilizing for each of those trainings. We have one of the employment law attorneys from our city attorney's office at Wood Berlin or Cohen. Who's coming on site to deliver the training to our employees in person. And then I gave you all a copy of our policy that we worked on in two thousand and twenty-two, so recently updated that, went over that with our bargaining groups. And then we're making sure that all of our employees are reviewing that and we're covering that as part of the training that we're having with our employees. And then we do have an online training option for any employee who is just not able to attend one of the three sessions for some reason. Then we are keeping a roster to ensure that we capture everybody and that they, if they didn't attend one of the three sessions, we'll provide them with an online training option. So we just wanted to make you aware that.
Do we need to do that or?
You're not mandatorily required to do it, but if you would like to complete the online training, I'd be happy to provide that to you. Some of you may already be doing it as a part of your own jobs, but if you're not, I'm happy to provide that to you. So let me know.
I'm due. So I'll be doing mine at work, so I should be current.
Okay, so I just wanted to let you know that we're working our way through that process and we're just about done with our last training day this Wednesday.
You have to do that annually.
Twice every two years. Okay, no unfinished business tonight?
Some new business.
So item number eight point one on your agenda tonight is review and approve job description and salary range for the new position of environmental programs manager. So if you recall, you kind of saw a little bit of a preview of this item at your last meeting. We went back and relooked at this job description and talked a little bit more about it within the department and we're bringing it back to you with where we've landed. So we feel that the appropriate classification based on the work to be performed is environmental programs manager. Right now, we're contracting with the city of Morgan Hill to provide these services for us. We initially, the scope of work was not. So much that we couldn't share an employee with another agency, and so that's what we were doing. But there have been several new laws and regulations that have come into play. That has increased the, the amount of work that falls under this position. And so we feel like we've reached the place now where we need to have our own dedicated employee working on these programs for us. And so that is why we included this in our budget and the council approved us moving forward with a position to perform this function. So there's stormwater programs, which has a ton of compliance associated with it. In addition, we have recycling, composting, energy and natural, natural resource conservation, water conservation. These are all areas for oversight and compliance. This position worked closely with Recology, our current waste collection contractor. Because there's a variety of different community programs related to these areas that require a lot of outreach and education. This position will reside in the engineering division of the Public Works Department. That's where the current Morgan Hill employees reside. When they come to do their, their hours here. And so we really did look at what services Morgan Hill is providing, the job descriptions that are present for the positions in Morgan Hill. That gave us a lot of guidance in putting our position together. And so we, Morgan Hill has a couple of positions that are dedicated to this effort. We're just getting our first one. And so we weren't quite sure where we wanted to land, but at the end of the day, we felt the environmental programs manager was the right spot for us. So we looked at other comparable agencies, also evaluated our internal equity. So this position being a manager will fall in the Gilroy Management Association bargaining group. And it will have a salary range of one twenty-eight, three eighty-four to one seventy-six, three forty-six. Plus benefits. This is similar to other management positions in, that we already have within this bargaining group. Information technology manager, economic development manager, housing and community services manager. And our community development customer service manager. So this position will align with those positions. Similar level of technical knowledge, program oversight, compliance work. So it's an exempt mid-management position. The Gilroy Management Association Group actually confirmed back to me today that they didn't have any feedback or changes on the job description that we developed. They felt it adequately covered the duties of the position and was fairly placed on the salary schedule. So following approval of the job description and salary range, we'll be starting a recruitment process to fill this position. And then following some cross-training with the personnel from work, from Morgan Hill. Will then phase out the contract with Morgan Hill and have our own dedicated staff for this particular function. We still have overlap with Morgan Hill because with the, with stormwater program, there's. Connection to the shared wastewater treatment plant that we have. So there still will be a lot of interaction between the person we hire in this position and the staff that are present in Morgan Hill, and they've been doing a great job for us. So the draft job description is attached in your packet and it contains all the information related to the position. All the duties and knowledge that we hope for.
Will this manager have any subordinates?
Not initially, possibly overseeing some consulting agreements initially, but possibly an intern.
And then in terms of, I saw the part about the equivalency. So is it, it says equivalency is to be determined at sole discretion of the city. So is it, I guess my question is, because I. Run into this frequently. Is it better to spell it out? Or do you want, I mean, the ambiguity, who's it benefiting? Is it benefiting the city? Is it benefiting the applicant? Because if it's at the sole discretion, I would say that it's benefiting the city to put it that way, but. Will that weed people out?
We're, we're looking for options. You know, we've, we've encountered like many other public agencies challenges in hiring and recruiting. Highly technical positions. And we would hate to discount somebody who, you know, say, you know, had an AA degree, but not a bachelor's degree. But maybe had fifteen years of related experience. We want the flexibility, you know, in some, in, in the instance to, you know. You know, perhaps be able to talk to that person about this position and not be barred from talking to the person because the. The requirements are written so strictly that they have to have the bachelor's degree.
Right.
Now certainly that's preferred and a lot of candidates that apply for this work do. But we just don't want to exclude someone who maybe has excellent experience and has acquired other training. That, you know, makes them equally qualified for the position. Especially with highly technical positions, we're finding sometimes that it's super difficult to fill positions and we don't. We don't want to make it harder for ourselves than it has to be. And then also our diversity, equity, inclusion initiatives and what we're trying to. Do to broaden our organization encourages us to look at more flexible job requirements whenever possible. So we're trying to look at more combinations of things than strict requirements.
Yeah, one of the things I've heard recently is that they're looking at degree requirements at, from a D E I lens saying that. That for the disadvantaged requiring a bachelor's degree is unfair. And so if you have equivalent years of work, that's applicable. That there's, they want to start adding that in to some of these minimum qualifications. So that you're not screening out people because they didn't have the money to go to college and get a four-year degree.
You're going to see more of this wording, like what's seen here coming to you in our job descriptions. Because we've been talking about that very thing as well.
Right, okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
So I'll make a motion to approve the. Get back to it, the job description for environmental programs manager and the associated salary.
That was a motion by Commissioner Cummins, second by Commissioner Bronze. That motion carries forward, Sarah. Okay, and the next new business item for you this evening is review and approve new job description and salary range for facilities and fleet superintendent. And the reclassification to the position. So this has a little bit of a background to it, so bear with me while I kind of walk you through this. But the city council recently approved a reorganization of the facilities and fleet divisions within the administrative services department. We, we looked at this as an option because we weren't able to fill the vacant superintendent after several different attempts to recruit to fill the position. And so during this time, our facility superintendent agreed to step up and help cover the management oversight of the, of the fleet group. While we were doing the recruitment process. But we weren't making any headway or progress on the recruitment process and so the period kind of got a little more extended for him to be, you know, covering it on a temporary basis. And so when, when we felt a little defeated that we weren't able to fill the position, we kind of just took that step back and said, well. You know, in part, what we're doing now seems to be working somewhat well, you know, maybe with a few other tweaks, this could. You know, maybe this is the solution that's right in front of us and we're, we're not seeing it. So. We took a step back and looked at that a little bit more carefully and we thought that with a few other potential changes. That it would actually be possible for the facility superintendent to actually oversee both work groups. So currently, the facilities section is made up of the facility superintendent and three facilities maintenance specialists and one custodian. We also have, we also contract for some facility services. Cleaning, we have a service that comes into our buildings in the evening and cleans and, and we use different contractors for different types of jobs that. Need to be completed that are beyond the, the scope or the availability of our own staff. And then the fleet division had a superintendent, one senior equipment mechanic and two equipment mechanics. And then the two divisions shared an office, a part-time office assistant. And so we took a look at the, the resources that we had. And if with the change to creating a facilities and fleet combined superintendent. It could potentially work if there was some initial help. And that would be in the form of upgrading one of the facilities maintenance specialists to a senior, the fleet section has a senior, but the facility section did not. And then also bringing on a full-time administrative support person to provide support to the functions. And take the, some of the administrative work off the superintendent's desk would also free up time of the superintendent to oversee both areas versus being bogged down in paperwork. And then to ensure that fleet has the support and help that it needs, resources allowed to. Bring on a part-time assistant equipment mechanic who can do certain things in support of the fleet division since we will be. The superintendent will, will, you know, kind of taking away that position if we want to add back in handling the workload in the fleet group as well. So those were the changes that we proposed. So again, upgrading one facilities maintenance specialist. Upgrading the office assistant to a full-time management assistant and then adding the part-time. Assistant equipment mechanic coupled with the reclassifying of our existing facility superintendent to oversee both areas. Kind of created a package that seemed to work to accomplish the, what needs to get done. So that reorganization was brought to the city council, but the cost, costs associated with that, I put it into the staff report too, so you can see. It actually ended up working out to be a slightly small, a very small amount of savings at the end of the day. And so with, with this change, the first thing that we need to do. It, we needed to do was create a combined facilities and fleet superintendent job description. So that's the item that's before you tonight and the job description that's attached in the packet. And then determining a salary range for the position now that it's going to have a much broader scope. And be overseeing both work groups. It justify having a higher salary than, than currently. And so that's what's before you tonight is the facilities and fleet superintendent job description. It's pretty comprehensive and includes all the different kinds of things that one could do in this position. There were some areas of both descriptions that overlapped and so those merged together. The person who's performing this work right now, I had him look at a draft of this as well. To validate whether or not this actually truly did cover the different work pieces that are currently being performed in the job. And he said that it did. And probably covered more and then everything that, that we need in here, but it's always good to put it all in here. Because you don't have to use every aspect of a job description, but you want it to be and then what you need it. So we're, the first action we're looking for is for you to provide feedback and potentially approve the. New job description for facilities and fleet superintendent. And then we determine that the appropriate salary range should be one sixteen four fifty to one fifty nine nine fifty three. Which increases from the current range that both positions have. It's about a twenty percent ish increase to the salary range. And, and this will be on the Gilroy Management Association salary table. We did consult with the Gilroy Management Association when we were putting the reorganization proposal together and they were in full support of it. Because they, they didn't like seeing the extended vacant position that we weren't able to fill as well and they thought this was a good compromise solution. And so then the final action that we're asking for you to do tonight is to reclassify the current facility superintendent Walter Dunkle. To the new classification of facilities and fleet superintendent. Mr. Dunkle's been with this city for almost nine years. He's been managing this fleet function for several months on a temporary basis along with his facilities work. And he has really enjoyed it. He has some experience in this area from a prior job that he held. So it was a natural transition for him and he looks forward to continuing this work. Once we classify to new position on a, on a daily basis. It's always, you know, how much do you get into when you're only doing that on a temporary basis? And so you, you own it much more when you know you're going to be the person, you know, keeping it for a permanent basis. So those are the three actions for you tonight and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So he has lots of years of experience. Does he have a degree of anything?
I believe he does because he had to meet the requirements of his existing job description of facility superintendent.
Leanne, does the, I see here about the class A license, right, within twelve months of hire. Does the city pay for the course? And then the other certification, the ACE, the ASE certification? Same thing, it says they may be required to obtain additional, so the city covers the cost of those as well.
Yes, and, and we do that now with all of our employees that, that have to get a class A license. I mean, some of our employees we hire, they already have it. But the ones that don't, they have to, the D and B rules now require them to actually go to a driving school and they have to complete at least fifteen hours of driving. Most of the schools are more hours than that, but it really does prepare them to take the hands-on driving portion and to be able to drive any vehicle. And, you know, we feel that the fleet superintendent should be able to drive those vehicles, especially in an emergency situation. If we have a, we activate our emergency operations center, we run a disaster and we need to move this vehicle to this place. We need folks to be able to do that. So that would be something that we would, we would ask the super, you know. Because he's transitioning from facilities to fleet, this would be, you know, that would be a new thing that people have to look, look into and complete. We just had our new, our senior equipment mechanic is relatively new to the city, but he jumped on it right away, completed the stool and got his license already. Done and he's not even off permission yet, but he took care of it right away. So. There, we've tried out a few of the different schools in this area. We know which ones are better than others, so we've kind of, we've kind of filtered out a couple.
Anyone want to make a motion to?
We can do all three things in one motion if you want to, or you can take them one at a time. It's up to you.
I move that we approve the job description for the position of facilities and fleet superintendent and the salary range for the position. And reclassification of Mr. Walter Dunkle to the position of facilities and fleet superintendent.
I'll second. So that was a motion by Commissioner Bronze, seconded by Commissioner Cummins and that passed on a four oh vote. Thank you. And then the last new business item for tonight is our selection of Personnel Commission Chair and Vice Chair for twenty twenty four. So this is a process that we go through each year to appoint a commissioner to each of those positions. Currently Commissioner Eddie Mitchell is the chair and Commissioner Harrow is the vice chair. Any commissioner may be selected for either of these positions, but we have had a historical rotation. That we've honored with this particular commission where the vice chair becomes the chair. And then the next commissioner who has not served in one of the roles would move to the vice chair role. So this instance, if we followed our tradition, Commissioner Harrow would move from vice chair to chair. And in this instance, Commissioner Cummins would become the vice chair because Commissioner Bronze is graciously staying with us. And we so appreciate that she is staying with us. So it would, it would be appropriate then for Commissioner Cummins to be the vice chair and then Commissioner Eddie Mitchell gets a little break. So again, anyone can serve in, in any role that you guys want. But the rotation as described would be our tradition. And I'll leave it at that.
So are you willing to take it on?
Sure, yeah, unless anyone else.
No ma'am, I've already done it. You are more than welcome to take it on. I'm happy to be a vice chair. Give me the break.
And you can make a motion.
I can make a motion, okay. I move that we follow tradition with this committee. And have Commissioner Harrow as our president, chair or chair, and Catherine as our vice chair. In favor?
Do you need a second to your motion?
I need a second.
I second, but I have, I do have a question. On here I notice it says applications have been limited. Have you gotten any applications?
We have not. There was one applicant who applied for multiple commissions but got placed on a different commission versus this commission. Other than that, we just really haven't seen interest in, in applicants for this particular commission, unfortunately. And since we're a commission that we've been able to maintain a quorum when we've needed to meet, you know, we haven't. You know, been overly stressed out about that and as long as you're willing to help still, you know.
I mean, just not concerned.
I'm, 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 I'm always on the lookout. I'm always on the lookout for, for someone who by enjoy serving on this particular commission. And this year's going to be, you know, an important year because we're going to work on the HR rules and regs. So, you know, it might, it might even be hard for somebody who's not had any exposure to this commission to jump into that particular project. But we'll, if that, if it happens, we'll, we'll bring them on board and make it easy.
That's true.
Okay, then I move forward with my second.
So we have a, a motion by Commissioner Eddie Mitchell and with the second by Commissioner Bronze to appoint. Commissioner Harrow as the chair and Commissioner Cummins as the vice chair. And then you need to do an all in favor.
All in favor.
So that passes on a four. Okay, so starting with our next meeting, we'll rotate and we'll, we'll switch roles and we'll go forward.
Can I make a motion to adjourn? Are we at the end of our meeting?
We have item number nine, which is just future Personnel Commission business. These are just things that we're working on. So no, no reports or anything, but just to point it out that we, these are a few things that we have in our queue that we're working on. Coupled with the HR rules and regs project as well.
So odds are good we'll meet next month.
Odds, odds are good that will be next month. Yes, yes, I'm going to try to have item one and item two. For sure, and then I'm hoping that I will get item three and four from the, from the police department. They've been working on those two. And I, I got wind that they're nearing, nearing finishing, yeah, their review process getting ready, but hasn't appeared here, so. That will, they might be ready. So now you can make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
There's second, second. And it's seven oh four P M and I am turning off the recording. Thank you for tuning in.
Do you have to go to the city council meeting?